We'll call this meeting of Allegheny County Commissioners September the eighth meeting to order. Let's all stand for the pledge religious and invocation place.
Religious flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you with a humble heart tonight, Lord, and a thankful heart. We just thank you for the gift of life and all the blessings that goes with it, Lord, that you provide us with. Lord, we ask that you give us the knowledge and the wisdom to do the business of this county as you would see fit for us doing. It would be most pleasing to you. Be with us and be with us. Keep us safe. Keep us healthy. And we give thee all the praise. For these blessings rest in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, agenda as is, no changes. Do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh. Motion on the eighth nine, eight eleven, eight twelve, eight seventeen, eight twenty-six, and nine two. Everybody read all that?
Wish to approve all presented, sir.
Second. Motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. I vote. I want to take just a second, a couple of minutes right here, if I may. I want to address the board and the citizens of the county and the employees. In light of what happened at our last meeting, I want to address the citizens and county employees of Allegheny County. The commissioners have a code of ethics. When we take office, we are sworn to uphold. Our citizens deserve better than what we have been delivering. We haven't been living up to those standards. I was elected to the board by my fellow commissioners. I am here until December this fall. From this day forward, our meetings will be held with respect and dignity to all citizens. Whoever is standing at the podium speaking will be treated with respect. That's a must. It is good to bring respect and dignity back to our meetings. Good debates and good discussion is a must. We can certainly accomplish that, but it can be done in a better atmosphere. There is a way to talk to people without raising our voices and shouting. We don't have respect for one another. We don't have anything. I believe I know my fellow commissioners well enough to say most of them have the same desires I do. With their help, we will accomplish this. I do believe an apology to our employees would be most appropriate. Anybody has any questions or comments? Be glad to answer them.
I think it's well said.
Thank you. Here and now, we'll move on. Public comment time. Anybody has any comments? Come forward, please.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are y'all doing? I'm here for two things. First thing is, I just want to thank y'all for the fire tax. Because this year, we have not been able to do no fundraisers. And so that was zero dollars that we brought in to help the fire department. And without the fire tax or some kind of extra money, we've just been sunk, I'll be honest. And by implementing the fire tax, that helped us to where we can make a decent living at the fire department and keep things up. And also, it gave you all four hundred, five hundred thousand extra on your budget that y'all didn't have. So I think it's a plus for all of us. I really do. The second thing I want to talk about, just for a second, is I know there's some discussion about different things, implementing on the fire tax, what we need to do on our side too, and what y'all making rules. And I talked with Jamie before, with Officer State Fire Marshal, which I talked to him again today, and asked him if he'd be willing to come up and sit down and answer some questions and give guidance on this because he deals with fire departments all over the state and knows about fire tax. And he said he'd be glad to. He'd like to sit down with two commissioners and the county manager. What he'd like to do, he said, he don't like all those commissioners because it creates a forum, and he's not here to pass rules or anything. He's just here to give advice on anything you need. And he said any day, a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, would work better for him if two of you could get together, and Mr. Carter, and said he'd be glad to come up, sit down, just answer questions, and give some advice, to where we need it too, because we're all on the same page as you do. And we do want to spend the money wisely and correctly, and it will be spent wisely. We've done this for years with very little money, so I'm sure we can continue to do a good job and serve our citizens. So if y'all get together and get a date set, then just let me know.
We'll accommodate that, and we'll let you know what the date is.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And again, thank you for, yes.
You said Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday?
Yeah. He said Monday and Tuesdays was kind of hard for him. But said that Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, he said about any time he could sort of make a time for it. So, but you know, if more of you wants to come, I'm sure he's fine. He's not hard to get along with, Jamie's not. He's just here to help. So thank y'all again for all y'all do, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Evening. I'm Darrell Reeves. This is Gavin Everback. I've got Phil Horton and Andy Anderson with me. We're from the local Boy Scout troop 299. Our community has supported us through the years, and in turn, we feel obligated to show some support. An organization went above and beyond to help the boys raise funds to go to Fillmont Scout Ranch in New Mexico a couple of years ago. Boy Scout slogan reads, "Do a good turn daily." I'm gonna put my glasses on so I can see this better. This can mean a simple act of kindness all the way up to helping out with a disaster. That said, we would like to offer our support to our local VFW post in the form of a donation of a thousand dollars from the Boy Scouts Troop 299, help with earthquake damage to their building. Veterans have sacrificed so much for us through the years in ways we cannot even comprehend. I hope this will have a positive impact on our community in such trying times that we've had. Biggest reason I'm here is we would also like to issue a challenge to all the people of Allegheny County to pledge their support to all the victims of the earthquake. I cannot think of a time in our community that they've needed us more than right now. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Darrell. That's a mighty nice gesture for you, for you scouts to let and take that on. It says a lot.
Hopefully, some other people, you know, all, there's more people than them that needs the support. Hopefully, we can all be positive note.
Thank you. Anybody else? And then we'll move on down to Section A, General Business. Megan Edwards.
Hello. The reason I'm here is a gentleman in our community, Jacob Evans, has put together what we are calling Worship at the Fairgrounds. And some local, it's Cornerstone Praise Team, Jacob Evans, Grace Notes, and Emma Foley are putting on a, basically a praise and worship service at the fairgrounds. There is no admission, but they are going to take up a love offering for the earthquake victims. And all of the donations will be made to First Community Bank. It's two hours on September the nineteenth from six PM to eight PM. And I'm here to ask you all if we could waive the fee to use the fairgrounds for that event because it is a fundraiser for everyone in our community since we're all struggling at this time.
What's the feeling of the board?
To me, the thing changed last week. We got the state funds to earthquake victims. In the county, I figure how we're gonna manage it, but $24 million to be used for that. Part of it goes to courthouse, part of it goes to VFW. About $23 million is going to be set aside. I don't know that we need to do a lot of fundraising.
I spoke with Daniel Rotten last. He had said that he wasn't certain. Everybody's having to apply for loans, and that if they were eligible for a loan, that they would be receiving a loan in a small business loan first. And then, if they weren't eligible for a loan, that they would be eligible for grant money. So some of these people that are eligible for a loan, unfortunately, were some of them that had 70% damage to their homes. And I just, First Community Bank has opened up an account for all of the earthquake funds to go to, and that's where these donations will be made.
You're asking us to relieve the 200 and, what'd you say, the rental?
We just went up on the fees at the fairgrounds, but it's $250 for a day for the grandstands right now. And they're actually bringing in their own PA system, and they won't be using any of our equipment, or they're just going to be using the grandstands.
Make that a motion if you need it.
Well, who's, about the fairgrounds commission?
The fees from the fairgrounds events come to the county, so that's why I'm asking.
They approve the event?
Yes.
Make that a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Five oh, excuse me. Thank you. Ms. Rita Miller. Ex-lady.
Evening.
Evening.
Tonight, I was asked to talk about the earthquake and the revaluation a little bit. So the earthquake damage that the property owners sustained really doesn't affect the overall 2021 revaluation. And I've talked with Department of Revenue. I've talked with Ron Vincent, who is our appraisal consultant. He owns the company that done our commercial and does appraisal consulting throughout the state. And so this is what has been recommended, so that for owners who provide documentation to the tax office before January 1st, that their property was deemed unsafe or unlivable, uninhabitable, we would reduce that down to 10% good until the property has been razed or demolished. Then, for example, if it was $40,000, it would be reduced down to $4,000, which would equal a tax bill of $23. And then, if there's structures that have still not been repaired or not completely repaired by January the 1st, then they could submit their damage estimates, photos, any kind of documentation that they have to help us ascertain the percentage complete. Now, we'll get building permits through building inspections like we always do to look at those properties. And the tax office staff will look at as many as we can, but there will be no way that we can look at all of them before January the 1st. So we can, if the board wanted me to, look at seeing what Vincent valuations would charge us to have some of their appraisers come and help us out at the end of the year for about a week. And then, also, will be the Board of Equalization and Review. So property owners who didn't get an adjustment, they're as uninhabitable or damaged, that still hadn't gotten an adjustment by the time the revaluation notices go out, they'll be able to go through the Board of Equalization and Review to have it looked at then. I'm also working on a form that should be available by November the 1st. We'll have it online and in the office, and it'll be specifically for these earthquake damaged properties, specific questions for them to answer and things like that, to help us go ahead and kind of get in front of it before the revow notices go out, have that assessed before the notices go out. But right now, like some of the key points right now, has the earthquake had an overall negative impact on our economy? Not really. The economy and the real estate market drives our revaluation. Our real estate market's still very, very strong. Right now, it's hard to forecast what repairs will be completed and what won't by the first of the year. That leaves us in a kind of tough spot right there. And then again, Board of VNR will be the last time if these folks haven't had an adjustment or haven't gotten to talk to somebody that they'll be able to come in and talk and get an adjustment for anything that hadn't been completed by January the 1st. I have talked with Daniel Rotten, Emergency Management, about getting a list of the properties. Again, we'll get the building permits, and then I think there's going to be a GIS mapping layer. And if we can get access to that, that will also help us with that process. The end of the year is really crunch time to get our revow finished up, so that's why I don't have appraisal staff to put out on the field, out in the field specifically working on this right now. Any questions about any of that?
Questions, comments?
And then I was asked to speak about Bottomley Enterprises, where they're moving their trucking operations to Surrey County. So the loss in personal property assessed value, based on what they submitted this year, is 4.5 million, which calculates out to $26,900 in property taxes and $3,200 in fire tax in the Glade Creek Fire District. What that?
Know when that will take effect? When, how does that work, going from Allegheny to Surrey?
So they've listed in Allegheny for this year, but by next year, their listing will most likely be in Surrey County.
So for our budget year, that money's still good?
Yes, for this year, yes. It's based on what's sitting in Allegheny County on January the 1st.
What was, wait. Is the primary property that they'll be moving to Surrey County?
To my knowledge, that's just the trucking company. Bottomly Evergreens and Farms will remain in Allegheny.
But what I'm talking about, do you feel that they're going to move the licensing of their trucks and trailers from Allegheny to Surrey?
I don't know that. I haven't personally had a conversation with them about that. But I believe it's been said that they'll continue doing that through our Allegheny tag office. But now, by statute, it has to be where the property's located. It would have to be Surrey County.
If they, if they're parking their trucks and trailers in Surrey County, then it'd be taxed in Surrey County.
Correct. That's the 4.5 million, that number.
Still, it's an impact because one penny, if looking at $2,700, well, $30,000 right now.
Yeah, any loss is gonna.
We've got the county manager out turning rocks over and picking up pennies in the parking lot, so.
What's the fire tax value?
$3,200, based on what they listed this year, yes. Again, that doesn't include registered motor vehicles. Those kind of trickle in every month, so we don't have any totals on those until we've been through the first year of it.
Other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and turn it on in.
Evening.
Evening.
Should have a few pieces of paper from the finance office. The first one I'm going to go over is the line item transfers. All of these affect salaries, so that's why I'm bringing it to the board. Soil and water, the line item transfer. There was a budget line in the longevity that was not budgeted for enough money to pay out longevity for the two employees this year. So we need to move from full-time salaries, just $400, to cover that deficit in longevity. And we do have that extra money with just a changeover of the director in that department right now. For recreation, in the budget process, when the actual budget committee was going through the process, and I believe they started that in February and ended up completing it toward the end of May. In that budget process, the Director of Recreation actually went from the higher end to the minimum salary. And that did not get changed in the budget. So what we're asking for is to transfer the salary, the FICA, and the retirement that would go with that amount of money from the higher end rate to the minimum. And there is enough money to do that in contract labor. The third one that I have in front of you is for transfer facility. We did have a part-time person at the transfer facility for just a few weeks. Basically, we were trying it out to see if two full-time and one part-time was going to work out there, and it didn't. The employee decided not to take the full-time salary. There was actually a part-time line item that was set up for that. And when that full-time employee was paid out his annual leave, it accidentally defaulted to that part-time line item. So I'm just asking to put that where it needs to be in the full-time line item, just from the part-time to the full-time.
Need a motion? A motion. Motion in the second. Any discussion?
Here's a question. May I ask a question?
Sir.
So these are transfers. These are. So, these are transfers, these are not budget amendments, these are transfers within these departments. And the Budget Committee certainly remembers, but we had talked about at least bringing these items that impact salary, either transfer in or out before the Board so that there's an understanding of the impact. I don't, I don't think these are of the amount in which to do a motion. I think we had discussed 5,000 and up in our department, all of these are below that, so I think this is more or less an opportunity to present that to the Board, answer any questions, but these are certainly doable without that process.
Information only.
Yes, sir.
One more second.
Draw my motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. The next one is a budget amendment, General Fund Number Two. This is actually insurance proceeds from a claim that the Sheriff's Department did on some computer repair. The proceeds came in from our insurance company, and we just need to transfer that into the Sheriff's Department budget. I believe that repairs have been done and everything, we just, we just need to add the money there into the, that budget.
Second Amendment Number Two. Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, five oh.
The last one that we have, it's presented as a budget amendment, but it's actually not a budget amendment. This is actually in the last fiscal year. And I do have Lisa here, if you have any questions. This is for DSS. This is for some late bills that came in in July, some of them even the 1st of August, correct, Lisa? She has enough money in her salary line left from last year, she's actually, Sydney and I ran the report this afternoon just to double check, $96,111 left in that. And she needs to transfer that $29,152 to those two lines to take care of those bills from last year.
Chairman, I would ask that you consider a motion on this because it does exceed $5,000, and it's in your previous budget, so.
We are talking about an impact on the salaries, even though it's last year.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, five oh.
Thank you.
West Wireless. Okay, moving on down. Allegheny Act Committee Ex officio member. They're wanting to appoint Dana Sheets to the... Appointment for that board. Here, a motion?
Motion.
A motion and a second. You want to talk? You second it.
Second.
Good deal. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, five oh. Okay. Let's see, BOE.
That's me.
That's me.
Uh, I've gotten a lot of feedback from our citizens about being bombarded with what looked like legal voting information, request for mail-in voting, et cetera, getting multiple ones going to the same address, some going to the same address, some going to previous address. There is a form in there for registration, which is legal, it's a marketing firm that's doing that, it's not the state that's doing it, so, don't be confused. If you, to get a mail-in vote, you've got to request it. And you, then they will check, make sure you're registered to vote, so, don't worry about those things, it's just a marketing, I'd say gimmick, but anything else promoting mail-in voting, nothing to worry about.
Next up, earthquake review documents, Hemp Hill Randall Associates.
I'll take that one. On, starting on page 27 through 30, you have an agreement that is, simple AI agreement. What this is for, if you look at page 29, in the middle under Article 6, it identifies the architect's compensation shall be $3,100. What this is, is as a result of the earthquake damage. As you recall, we had Hemp Hill Randall Associates up to look at the courthouse. We've also had our insurance adjuster in, who has viewed all of the county facilities as well. They have approved Hemp Hill Randell as the engineer for the courthouse facility, which we'll get to shortly. What they have also done is they approved them to be the engineering review for this facility, 90 South Main, the Sheriff's Jail, and the pool. So, this agreement for $3,100 includes those five facilities, the review by Hemp Hill Randell to perform the review necessary to get to the construction bidding document type phase. But they are, they have been approved by our insurance company, and they're, and they're already here in the county, they'll actually be here tomorrow, so.
Sounds good.
I would ask that you consider approving that document.
Do I hear a motion? A move? Second. First and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, five oh. Design construction document.
Hey, that, that is the second step. So, what you see beginning on page 31 through 47 is actual design, construct, bidding and construction plans for the earthquake damage for the courthouse. Now, we'll see, as soon as I get my paper in order, that included in this agreement is only damage from the earthquake. As you recall, we have a separate group working on the moisture control issues within the courthouse. So, if you look at page 45, you will see Exhibit 1. Again, 1.1 identifies what I just stated, this is only earthquake damage, not moisture-related or any roof. And 11.5 is the outline of the process and the included anticipated schedule. So, this agreement total is $19,500. And, as has been mentioned before, these numbers were included in the money submitted to the state. So, at some point, we will receive those funds, so I'm asking you to, to consider approving this agreement, Hemp Hill Randell in the amount of $19,500.
Motion to approve. Second. First and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, five oh. Your local agreement with the Town of Sparta.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind to take that one either. We discussed at your work session, the inter-local agreement between the Town of Sparta and Allegheny County for the Carizak Funds. This is the same agreement we, we looked at then. I know the Mayor's here tonight, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I think that the agreement's in order, and I ask that the Board consider adopting this agreement. It, it does identify an allocation of $161,837 to the town. And the county thus far has received 647,349 total funds.
Based on a percentage, 25%, if I recall, of the...
Municipalities are entitled to 25% of the county allocation, yes, sir.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. A motion, here a second.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, five oh. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, direction of the roof, roof replacement.
Good. Also, at one of our last meetings, started talking once again about moisture abatement at the courthouse. And in the past, I had presented information from the engineers with two options, and one of those options is to basically abate the material on the tin portion of the courthouse roof as it is, to make the necessary transitions between the metal and the TPO roof, and reapply a coating on the existing tin, or to basically re-roof that portion. And still, you, you still have to do the abatement because the material there has to come off. Still have to do the transition, and I'll break through these, abatement of the materials $3,000. The transition between the metal and TPO roof, $1,800. The gutters and downspouts that accompany that portion is around $2,000. There's some minor TPO repairs that we've identified up there, and some of the, I'll call them strategic patches that were placed on that roof when it was installed. And, I mean, those are, those are without question on any portion. The real direction is, do you want to leave the existing tin in place and recode it, or do you want to replace that material and move forward with a new roofing design?
Myself, I'd be for putting a new roof on.
Same.
So.
Would add that that cost was also included in the money that was calculated with the state.
What was that cost for the new roof?
It's 30,000 on the re-roofing with your additional, you're somewhere around $42,000.
Put it on there myself, I'd be in favor of it.
Is that a motion in favor of?
I'll make a motion to, to be, a second, put the new roof on, fix it right.
Get it done right.
Yep.
What I, what I, what I add to that before is, with this, I will give direction to the, to the engineers. They will do a design, there's going to be, and I've included all this, everything, you go back and pull your file, I included all this in that money. There's a four to $5,000 design cost that'll come out, there's the roofing, you know, all that material, so, everything we're doing, I'm trying to set in motion as quickly as I can. So, I would ask that you, if you make a motion to approve not only the, the new roof and the associated components that go with it, but also the design work that goes along with the construction of that new roof.
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
A motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? We're, we're putting a new roof on and including the design of the... I did make a motion for the new roof.
There was already a motion standing, and a second.
That's what he's putting up, number 10.
Can you make the same motion? Go with Bobby's right there, and this, we'll move on.
Well, I've got a question, though, this is, this is with the funding that we're anticipating eight. We gotten final answer, I mean, that's waiting on one signature, last I heard.
I heard they got that. Best I heard, the best I could tell as of this morning, he still hadn't signed it. It was voted on 110 in favor, or 100 in favor and 10 against.
I guess my question or my thoughts are, should we add that, add to that funding? I mean, we're doing it with that funding.
Any approval of the funding?
And I think that's a good idea, I just have one thing to add, is, my opinion only, regardless.
Do it.
Got to do it.
You should do it. So, if, if we have to add that stipulation of...
It's going to hold you up.
It's going to hold me up. And we're in September, and just trying to move as quick as I can.
Oh, and otherwise, it would be from the general fund.
Would have to find a necessary funding to do that, yes, sir.
And you're...
To be fixed.
Okay to find that, I mean...
I can look really hard.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I, I don't mean to cause a ripple, I mean, I'm totally in favor of a new roof, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page with her.
The Judge Doughton at 9:30 this morning, the Governor had approved it.
Okay. I mean, I don't know, I'm just...
A conditional fine, yeah.
We got a motion and a second. More discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand, new roof and design, five oh. All right. Internal repairs to courthouse, can't imagine.
Put that one to you.
Doing fine.
In there. So, on pages 52, agenda you have, and this again, let me, let me lead by saying this, this is all moisture-related, this, this predates the earthquake, I want to keep that in mind. In order to get the necessary abatement and stripping down of the walls completed to, again, building those back, we have received an estimate from E. Luke Green, who is a contractor out of Johnson City, and it's, it's on page 54. Abatement of, of, of all the areas in the courthouse that have moisture damage is totaled on page 54 in the estimated $13,650. Anytime you, you deal with moisture abatement, it requires specialized individuals that does that. They are such a group, I think we talked about at an earlier meeting, the urgency and the necessity of getting this abatement done. Also, recall, I mentioned that this is only for the abatement and removal. Once we get the material down and out, we will then have to have someone replace that material. This is to get the material out, abated, and stripped down. This too, put it in that funding package.
All this, we've talked about, it's really coming out of the funds, it's to come in. Roof and...
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve, got a second, any further discussion? Raise your right hand, five oh. Any managers comment?
Look, I've just had several of them. Just a minute to read over here. Okay, so, the first one on page 50, 55, you have your August Building Inspection Report. I encourage you to look that over, see, see what all that entails. Next one is the Earthquake Relief Update, and Daniel Roat would have been here this evening, but Edson, Edson, he, he wanted the day off, and after all this event, I thought he deserved such. So, I asked him to prepare a, a statement, and I'll just read that for the record. It says, "There really has been very little change over the last couple of days. I've had no additional damage reports to my office this week. That's not to say there haven't been more, but we have advertised for the folks to count, contact the Disaster Recovery Center directly. Altogether, we're now up to 197 total seismic events, with a vast majority of them very small magnitude. Most of the calls we're getting now are in relation to the funding that's going to be available for citizens going forward. There are some unanswered questions at the state level, but things are overwhelmingly positive in that regard. It's been mentioned and is well-known now that every..." It's been mentioned and is well-known now that everyone starts with an SBA loan, then gets a grant award if unable to qualify for the loan. Heard a lot of concern in the community about this, and I want to encourage folks not to write this funding off or to give up. General Assembly has passed a budget that included over twenty-four million in relief for our county. Understand that part of this could be used to offset the loan balances. I have no confirmation of this yet, but it has been indicated to me that this would be the case. I have a meeting later this week and hope to gain more information on it at that time." So that is, that is, as we stand today, the latest information regarding the earthquake and the relief funds.
The twenty-four million is not exclusive for Allegheny County. It also goes to Ash, Surrey, and Wilkes County. They're eligible for part of that twenty-four million. I mean, it's not, the only thing specifically stated for Allegheny County was the courthouse six hundred thousand and thirteen dollars and the VFW at a hundred and sixty-some thousand. Other than that, I would assume, if the bill is signed, that Allegheny will get biggest part of that. It's not twenty-four million just for Allegheny County.
And I think that once, once all of this is put into action, certainly warrants a work session by the board to begin discussing what that amount is, the actual amount, and how we go about distributing those funds.
It's, you know, there's no detail how the money is to be spent, but if you read the bill, it's, it sounds pretty good on the surface, but you never know what it is until you get the restrictions on who and what and how they qualify.
I can only account for the six hundred thousand and thirteen dollars. I know what that was for.
Those two things were only earmarked for Allegheny County.
Specifically does not cover commercial properties.
What?
It does not cover commercial properties. I mean, it's specific in there, and I think the public needs to know that.
I just reading part of the, part of the bill. It was interesting, though, that ten people voted against it. Sort of curious as to why, but it's their choice.
The last comment that I have, I think I mentioned before that our scales, one set of our scales at the transfer facility was not acting accordingly. And of course, David's here this evening with us, and he could probably do a better job describing it since he was with us. But more or less, the inspection occurred today and they failed. Now, there is still a legitimate weighing-certified scale there, but that scale on the left side going in the facility is now disabled. And until we make the, or if we make the proper repairs to it, will be disabled until it's fixed.
Is David going to talk about that?
Is that the new or old scales?
It's the old.
It would be the one on the right, wouldn't it?
On the left going in.
The one on the left.
It's the old cement scale.
Right.
The blue one that's the more modern is the one that's still good. So what happened was today, we had American scales to come up and try to calibrate that scale. We had been working since the inspection to try to free that scale up so that we could continue to use that. So what our, what our venture was for today was that we wanted to try to buy some time by having that scale calibrated so that we could have it re-inspected, and then we could go back and do the repairs of what needed to be fixed. Unfortunately, those, those efforts that we had put forth over the last week, week and a half, was not enough. The entire length of that scale, the wall is leaning in against the scale, which is causing the scales to freeze up. It was all over the place today. It couldn't be consistent. So they, they turned them down and unplugged them, disabled them, so that we couldn't use them at all. The four corners of the scales will have to be chiseled out, plates put underneath, and those fixed back like they're supposed to be. So it's more than just the wall that, that needs repair. So those fixes, we don't have an estimate as to what that's going to cost, but the scales themselves was, was turned down today, so.
The other set of scales, are we still fully functional? Everything over there still operating, moving, going?
Yes, sir.
We can actually make out without them?
We can make out without them. It's, it's a little bit congested sometimes and a little bit aggravating, I guess, for the citizens that are coming, when you've got people going in the opposite direction across the ongoing scales or incoming scales, to be re-weighed so that we can charge accordingly. But that's necessary for funding, so.
More than one trip to the transfer station each week. I happened to be there today. And the state man was there, plus the company that was trying to figure out what was going on. They indicated they thought it could be repaired. They had no idea how much and how long it would take. My question is, I know we lost a lot of money today with trucks going out that weren't weighed going back out. And I understand that because of the work they were trying to do. But are we going to have to have another, how's it going to work that we're going to stop people that are trying to come in? Are we weigh the trucks trying to go back out? Can we guesstimate, or what's going to happen?
Let me take a shot at it and explain. So my experience with transfer stations, when you have regular paying customers that come in, contractors, whatever, they typically don't weigh out. They have a stored tariff weight in the, in the computer system. So when they come in and they have six ton on there, there's a ticket that generates off that stored tariff weight. So I don't, I don't know exactly what type of traffic was not being weighed going out, but I know most of your commercial vehicles, they usually have a stored tariff weight that generates that ticket. I'll give you an example. I'm very familiar with the city of Bristol. City of Bristol in Virginia operates a landfill. They take in over seven hundred ton a day. They have one set of scales. Now, granted, we're taking in somewhere around fifty to sixty tons, best I can figure. We're going to have one set of scales. Now, when you, ten times that amount, and the city of Bristol continues to operate with one set of scales, don't think it's a far cry to utilize one set of scales until we can at least find some reasonable solution to what this current situation is.
It was that way up until last year. We only had one.
And, and again, I think I said before, what, what has been and what will be are two different things. But I don't see the disabling of that older scale unit to be a huge concern at this point.
Only time they have to weigh going out is if they have a weigh bill to go down the highway with the people that take the trash, or take our refuse, or the metal, or the, whatever, a truck has to have a weigh ticket to go on the highway.
Right. And I personally, I think by requiring them to use that newer set of scales, get a better reading, because I've been there on different occasions, and the outgoing load didn't always have all the axles on the appropriate scale. Or maybe a wheel was sticking off. Or maybe we hit it sideways a little bit. On this newer set of scales, ain't a whole lot of, you better be a driver when you're going out of that one.
And we have, we've come up with a plan as far as weighing the outgoing from our collection. We'll, we'll just weigh the truck that's pulling the trailer and going down the road. Instead of trying to get our truck and trailer on there and back it off or turn it around, if we just put our trailer so that that truck can get to it, and this way that truck and trailer, I believe we can eliminate some congestion and some confusion. So we've come up with a plan on how to do that and get that fixed, so.
The wall's messed up. Is that the wall next to the weigh station or the outer wall?
It's the outer wall.
Outer wall.
Yes, sir.
Oh, great.
You know, the cheaper solution may be, while we're comparing cost of repairing that older set of scales, is also to get a cost on a red light, green light system. Because that tends to be what a lot of landfills utilize, is a red light, green light system.
And the money to do that is generated by the transfer station.
By the fund.
In the county taxes that are handed out each year.
It's in the transfer facility fund. Yes.
It's a proprietary fund. So that's a possibility is to raise, raise the transfer or raise the fee for the dump to cover either another loader. Is the loader working today?
No, sir.
Still not working?
No, sir. They're coming tomorrow.
Can we return that thing and get something that works?
I wish you could.
If we could find a way for the contract to be breached, why, I'm not sure.
Our lawyer can't figure out a way to get rid of the lemon?
I looked at the contract.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
That's all the comments I have.
Question or comments? Mr. Ravens?
I don't have a lot. Just, just want to thank the county for all that they've done through all the crisis and the challenges, the COVID staff, and just need to support them and the chairman for his opening remarks.
Commissioner John?
We'll wait until I have my notes before I make any further comments. Mr. Chairman, have a good day.
Commissioner Lewis?
It's encouraging to see a lot more people wearing masks as they go out. And more and more of that. I encourage people to continue to do that. They're not fun, but it's a way of life right now. It will keep other people safe. And continue to encourage people to shop local. Our merchants have been impacted by the virus, so we need to support them all we can. And everyone needs to be thinking about and hopefully encouraged to support the quarter cent sales tax.
Commissioner Bobby?
Just a couple quick things. We already covered the transfer facility. The BDC paving was done, I guess, one day last week. But I would like David and you to go by and look at the manhole cover. It sticks up quite high. I don't know if it was designed to be a speed bump. I would, I would be afraid if one of these low fork cars, something real, that load like that went over it without messing up the transmission. I don't know if you went by it today or not, but it doesn't look like the best deal that I've seen. Other thing is, traffic light, caution light down at the bypass in eighteen, is a very dangerous intersection. Part of that danger, I guess, will be removed when the town opens up the main street, but they have one big sign as you look up, eighteen, that blocks your view seeing vehicles come down. I don't know if it could be moved over any, or maybe West knows when those signs will be taken down. But people need to abide by the traffic laws and pay attention when they go through that intersection. It's, it's very dangerous. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Bobby. I just want to mention out the fairgrounds, Eric and Ray got some grant money for their new head gate and panels of seventy-five hundred dollars for the farmers and stuff to use in Allegheny County. The cattlemen's association put up twelve percent of that cost. It's to be rented out to farmers, and farmers have to be a member of the association to be able to get it, but that's a good deal. That's, that'll be a big help for a lot of, a lot of people. And it, it really touched me, the way the scouts stepped up tonight and offered to do their thousand dollar donation, that challenge. I hope that terrorizes well and multiplies that money a lot. That's, that's a great thing for them guys. Also, the town, the merchants are trying to get back cranked up and going here with the completion of street skate. Do they have a, West, do they have a date on that?
Should be done by the fifteenth.
Fifteenth September, next week. Sounds good. Also, the quarter cent sales tax, that's, I hope people will look at that and take that into consideration, look at the values of it, and find it in their hearts to vote for that, vote that in. That would, that would help Allegheny a great deal. If there's nothing else, we'll move on then. We've got a request for closed session, general statute one forty-three dash three one eight, one one dot eight dash six personnel, and to include April.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?